Welcome to another edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up. During this program, we will highlight the agenda items presented to the Lakeville City Council at their April 15, 2013 meeting. First highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5C, Parks and Recreation Department Monthly Report. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is Parks and Recreation Director, Brett Altergott.
All right, this is the Parks and Recreation Department Report from March 2013. We'll start with the Art Center. We had a very successful event on March 8th, the Dueling Pianos. It was a sellout. It is also an event that we're looking at bringing back with the next play bill. So that is something that Tom is working on with the Art Center right now. Again, it was very well received, the crowd. I guess, again, I wasn't there because I couldn't get a seat, but it was just so well received and we had, you know, more people inquiring, so we definitely want to bring them back. It's a great event to have. Also at the Art Center, over the course of two weekends, the Children's Theater, the Plays the Thing production, Children's Theater, put on six shows of Charlotte's Web. And as you can see by the numbers, we had just short of 1,200 people attend six performances. So, again, very good attendance. We also changed out the main display in the lobby. It's now Lisa Westfall has the exhibit right now, and she's an Art Center instructor. If you want to go see the pieces that are there, I encourage you, they're very nice pieces, and she had a very successful opening night selling a number of pieces that are there. Moving on to park maintenance, snow removal, and unfortunately, that still continues, but we had four snow events, and we also did some tree chiming. But as reported in previous months, the park maintenance, we do a lot of trail clearing. So with any event, we get out there, as you can see in the picture, there's a V plow on, and that allows us to get out and keep those trails clear. We try to stay ahead of the ballgame so we can use the plows versus blowers. So you can tell with all the number of events that we had, we were out there at least four times, and it's an effort to get 100 miles of trail clear. Park maintenance, also repaired field striping equipment as time allowed, and then we worked on our pontoon, which we use on Lake Marion for moving the fishing piers in and out, and also assisting with the buoys during the year. So there's, again, minor maintenance needed there. And then we constructed a sprayer for roundup to help us get through the parks quicker than having the backpack. Continuing on, we did some carpet cleaning in buildings, got our barrels ready for the season, some of the new barrels that came in, replacing them, getting more out in our system. Again, all those things happen behind the scenes, and usually, you know, as we're preparing and we have that little bit of time, as snow is supposed to be melting, that allows us to get a jump on some things moving into the spring season. There is still time to order trees and shrubs through April 22nd, so that's this Friday at the close of business, which is 4:30, for pickup on the 28th. And as of today, we ran the numbers at 3:30. As you probably would expect with the weather, the numbers are down, we sold 137 trees and shrubs. Kind of giving you an idea, our high in 2009 was our highest year with 520 trees. Last year combined between trees and shrubs was 427. So weather is definitely having an impact because they come bare roots, I think a lot of people are saying, can I even get it in the ground? But realize it's still two weeks away from delivery, so you know, hopefully the weather will cooperate, you'll be able to get that tree planted. But again, we're taking those orders through this Friday. As far as recreation, they've been interviewing their staff, their summer seasonal staff for like the Puppet Wagon, all the different programs at Ritter, things of that nature. So that was Patty and Dan were busy with that. We've also had 150 register for the Learn to Skate at the arenas. Summer athletic leagues are forming, softball was supposed to start this week, we have a delay on that. And the brochure was mailed out and delivered the week of March 23rd. Also, on that week, March 23rd, we had the Easter Egg Scramble and breakfast. Again, it was a fun event, I attended with my family for the first time. It was, what we most enjoyed was being downtown and going into the local businesses. Like, you know, it's a great opportunity for people who don't know about the downtown to go down there and actually get inside these businesses that they might not otherwise go see. We had 81 attend the event, again, it's joint with the DLBA. And so it started at the Heritage Center, which has been different, it's been at the Senior Center in the past, so we had breakfast at the Heritage Center in two shifts, and then there was a map of activities downtown. So far, revenue through March, looking at last year, we're a little bit down, but there are some things that skew that. Adult softball is yet to be entered, we have some summer program donations that are still coming in, and our advertisements were a little down, but we have taken more in even since last week when this was produced. So we'll keep an eye on that throughout the year, but our goal is to keep our revenues as steady as possible, you know, from year to year, not see wild swings, but depending on when things come in, you have ebbs and flows throughout the year. So I think it's more important to kind of see where we're at, benchmark about the sixth month, and then, you know, of course, as we get into third quarter, we'll get a better handle on that. But the positive is, our facility reservations are up. You know, some of that has a little bit to do with the Heritage Center, but I definitely know there are people that are calling to get our shelters throughout our park system, planning their family reunions or birthday parties. So we're very encouraged by that, and that number will continue to increase throughout the year until that we just can't hit every weekend or every event that people would like. Seniors, 20 new members in March, so our total for the year, although it kind of goes through April, so you'll still see some additional, we're at 979. The new calendar for the registration for the senior club is May 1st. So you're going to see it kind of, April won't be a lot, so you'll see that counter start up again in May. So that's, that's pretty good, pretty good numbers this last year. In March 20th, we did a new program, we had an afternoon dance, and it was a catered event by Rascals, and it was well attended, and these dances go to different communities in the metro area, so it was our turn. Again, well received, they're trying to build a base of people that go from each community. And so that way, you know, if you're from Apple Valley, they're also coming here to Lakeville, and our people are going there. So I think there's three, four communities right in this area. Also, on March 14th, the Healthy Cooking Class taught by dietitians from Family Fresh Market. It's a new program that Linda ran, that she said was extremely well received. Again, talking about preparing healthy meals, especially for seniors, that's a key component. And then they had their annual men's golf meeting. This is something we talked about at the end of the first quarter, is here, Heritage Center donations through the first quarter are a little over $6,300. Donations to date total, we've fundraised $147,475, and the balance to be fundraised, we have $131,000 and some change, $131,188 remaining, and we have a number of events planned throughout the year, and we hope to have that number somewhere around, at least down to 90,000 or less by the end of this year. So we'll keep plugging away those events, and at the end of the second quarter, you'll see some of those events will have taken place, that'll have an effect and drive that number down. I think, large number of the events will happen in the fall, the big ones. We have Summer Splash in the summer, but the auction and things that'll probably have the biggest impact on lowering this number are more September, October events. So, just kind of bringing up to speed on that. Ken, and just a project that's coming, some of you have asked, but the Kendrick Trail. Right now, it's the anticipated timeline, after talking with our consultants, is that we'll advertise either late April, early May, which would set up a bid opening in early June, which would having us, have us bringing those, any recommendations before the City Council, June 17th. So that's a timeline as of last week. That's anticipating that some of the delays that we had in review process from indot, that we don't hit any delays again, that what's there is either approved or minor modifications, and then that can be moved forward through the bid process.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5D, Police Department Annual Report. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is Chief of Police Tom Von Hoff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to present the 2012 Annual Lakeville Police Department Report, and I'd call your attention to the screen here, this is a time exposure photo taken by Officer Adam McDonald one night. Adam, of course, is one of our Crime Scene Unit Officers, and they receive extensive training in photography, and I thought it was just kind of a neat picture. We're dedicating this report to one of our Canines, Shadow, who retired in 2012, and now is living the retired life with Officer Loffler, his canine partner. In the back, I brought my own cheering section as well, like Mr. Starfield. I have Captain John Arvidson in the back, and Captain Tim Knutson, and I'd like to recognize both of them for assisting me along with Captain Manias, being part of our command team that is really largely responsible for, along with all the other employees and one of the police department, in providing the results for this year's annual report. Our mission statement, in partnership with the community, we are dedicated to reducing crime, problem solving, and ensuring the quality of life in Lakeville. And what are our values? Work hard, have fun, take responsibility, and maintain a healthy balance. And our vision, how we rate ourselves to be regarded by our community and our profession as the premier law enforcement agency in this state. Looking at the last five years, you see the population in Lakeville has increased from 54,076 to 57,740. And you take, those are five call areas, medical emergencies, animal-related calls, alarms, suspicions, and those call areas and phone calls kind of give you an idea of where, those are some of our most frequent incidents and high incidence categories, and they give you an idea of where our calls have been going in the past couple of years. Suspicion calls are up, alarm calls are down, animal-related calls are just up in the past year, and medical emergencies are up as well. Our CAD incidents went up to 38,893 incidents. Of course, CAD is computer-aided dispatch, it gives us kind of an idea of total activity. You'll also notice that peak there, that purple graph, and right in July there, that month is over 4,400 calls. It's a peak month last July, we haven't seen a month like that in the recent past. And so we are seeing the number of average calls go up, but we do have much good news in this report. Our Part 1 crimes, which are our most serious crimes, declined 3% in the past year. 803 Part 1 crimes were reported in 2000, or 778 Part 1 crimes reported in 2012 versus 803 in 2011. That's a 3% decrease. That's from our peak in 2006 of 1,193 Part 1 crimes, that's a 34.8% decrease. In six years, our Part 1 crimes have gone down significantly, and I'll talk about that as we move through the report. Likewise, our Part 2 crimes are less serious, more property crimes, minor assaults, decreased 8% in the past year, from 1,254 Part 2 crimes in 2011 to 1,206 Part 2 crimes in 2012. And that's down from 1,773 Part 2 crimes in 2004, a 32% decrease. And we believe that that's largely a result of a lot of the policies that we have done. Now, and one of the things is that nationally, crime has declined in both Part 1 and Part 2 crimes across the country. But we're even accelerating beyond the national rate of that. As a result of that, in just this year, we received an award based on 2011 statistics on, from the UCR crime, which is that Universal Crime Report for cities over 25,000 people. In comparison to the population of our city, to both property and violent crime, the 86th safest city in America. This is the first time in the history of the police department, in the history of Lakeville, that we have been in so recognized by this group, and that's by Neighborhood Scout, which is a private organization. And how do we do that? A couple of different ways. One of the initiatives that we started this year was the joint partnership with Dakota County Community Corrections. And we now have office space, which was a recording room at one point, where we allow probation officers to office on a part-time basis to meet their clients in our office. And they also team up with two of our patrol officers, Sandy Taney and Troy Hokinson, and they go out and meet their clients. As a result of that, we've made multiple arrests, and this is just in the last quarter of 2012 when this started. They had three arrests already, and I know we've made more arrests since then, but it helps to make our community a safer place. Community Corrections has been, the probation officers have been very happy to make this connection, and were the first department in the county to be doing this type of proactive approach with this. Another thing that we do is our traffic safety. You know that I report every month on our Traffic Safety Unit. For most of the year, Officer Nick Stevens was our Traffic Safety Officer, and Adam Steyer took over in September of 2012. And the Traffic Safety Officers are part of the responsiveness in our department, they respond to all the traffic concerns that we get throughout the community and do directed traffic enforcement. They also work on special projects like increasing seatbelt compliance or DWI compliance as well. We also have our Street Crimes Unit. And I found this graph particularly interesting because this started in September of 2011, goes through February of this year. And the Street Crimes Unit focuses on those type of crimes that really deal with our street-level offenders. And so you see traffic violations, drug paraphernalia, possession of marijuana, alcohol and tobacco, felony drug offenses, theft and trespassing, as some of the areas. Interestingly, they also did 25 search warrants. Now, when the cases go into larger quantities of narcotics and drugs, then it's passed off to our Drug Task Force officer. And how it breaks down in Lakeville, if you want to know a little bit about the types of abuse, or drugs are abused in Lakeville, out of the 25 felony-level cases that the Street Crimes Unit did in that time, nine were methamphetamine, eight were marijuana, three were heroin, and two were prescription, and three were other drugs as well. So this is kind of how it breaks down. And how does that look next to our Drug, Dakota County Drug Task Force, which does about 735 arrests each year and 200 search warrants? If you look at their arrest by drug type, you see it's almost the same percentages, with 33% methamphetamine, 28% marijuana, 15% prescription drugs, they have a little bit higher prescription drug percentage, and 11% heroin, and just 3% ecstasy, which is a little bit less than it's been in the past. Getting back to our department, with our K-9 unit, our two K-9 teams, Officer Chad Loffler and Tank. Tank is a new member to the department, Belgian Malinois, first time we've had such a dog. We've always used German separates in our Canines. And then, of course, Officer Jason Jensen and Zeus. And this year, we celebrated our 25-year celebration of our police K-9 service. Our five teams, Dakota and Officer Tom Hackla, Buster and Officer John Arvidson, Cuffkey and Officer Beth Eilers, Blue and Sergeant Brigham Stroll, Shadow and Officer Chad Loffler, and Zeus and Officer Jason Jensen are the teams that make up the 25 years between 1986 and 2011. We did have these memorial pins made. Of course, we had a celebration, you see just some of the trophies that our K-9 team got together and a cake, and then you see our mirror, mirror little, they're just getting to know Shadow before he retires, and there you got to know him a little bit better. But probably the most impressive thing about this picture is you look at the date on this picture and look at the trees in the background and the grass there. What a difference one year can make. We also have our lab, our computer forensics lab, cybercrime. Just some statistics, 75 million scam emails resulting in 2,000 victims every day, 73% of Americans experience some form of cybercrime, 46% of online adults been victims of cybercrime, 20% of all internet pornography involves children, and then 4% of all 10 to 17-year-olds receive aggressive sexual solicitation each year. This lab is fully functioning now, we just did a search warrant, and there were 22 computers seized on that single search warrant. And we're aggressively working on these cases, and as I've said before, nearly every one of our cases has a nexus to either a smartphone or a computer that makes this lab very valuable, and this is part of modern law enforcement agencies being effective. A couple of cases, and it's really difficult to pick out cases through the year, but I thought these four were kind of symbolic anyways of what we've seen over the year. The one up in the upper left-hand corner was a situation where some citizens saw some people breaking into a car, they got a good description of the vehicle, the vehicle was located by a Scott County deputy not long after, and it stopped, we were able to, our officers joined up with the deputy, and we were able to clear multiple thefts of vehicles cases. The upper right-hand corner there is property that was recovered after a neighbor saw some people exiting a neighbor's residence, they called, got a description of the vehicle, we stopped the vehicle, and arrested two burglary suspects. The one on the lower left is an arson case, where there was a couple of individuals who were going out committing arsons, and this one, you see they had stuffed really firecrackers and items trying to ignite that vehicle there, and they were unsuccessful in their attempt to do that, they did start a fire on the vehicle, but it was extinguished. Those individuals were located and charged by School Resource Officer Williams and Detective Dave Watson. And finally, at the bottom, as you can see, we're a full-service agency, and Officer Nick Stevens was on patrol, and there was people who were stranded out in the middle of Lake Marion, and he went to the shore and with the assistance of a boater there, was able to go out and rescue them. And so this picture was taken, it was coming back in to shore. So we do just about everything when it comes to those things. One of the things, a big thing that happened was a windstorm came through on June 19th, and you know, the Public Works Department and the Fire Department did an outstanding job in this. Our resources were fully taxed, but it was a remarkable effort by this entire city when you would go out there, and these pictures were taken, I took some of these myself, and between 7 and 8 o'clock in the morning, and within hours, literally, these areas were cleaned up, and you can see the amount of debris at the parking lot at our central maintenance facility there. And a lot of the straight-line winds, the house damage there, that was all on one street, and a lot of the straight-line winds came through and blew in garage doors and then blew out the walls adjacent to them. Fortunately, there was no one injured in this storm, but it did knock down a bunch of trees, and like I said, the Public Works Department just did an outstanding job, and the whole city came together. We did activate our EOC, Emergency Operations Center, for a short time during this event, and it was just, went very well for an event that started at 4 o'clock in the morning. Lakeville Night to Unite 2012, see Officer Jessica Swann are there, Sergeant Jim Ponchakar and Jim Stevens down below there. 75 parties across the city, literally thousands of our residents, and 75 of our neighborhoods get involved with this. We partner with the Fire Department, and City Council members all come out and really get to see our citizens meet with them. Very popular event in our community, and one of the reasons that Lakeville is such a safe community is because we have such strong neighborhoods. It just is born out when we go on these and the officers go out and the firefighters go out, and we meet and talk with the residents, and they're really the reason that we do so well. They call over 2,200 times in the past year reporting suspicious activity, and that's the key to a lot of our success. Working with our community, we do, our department does a lot of events. Up in the upper right-hand corner there, you see a part of our night crew that were ringing the bell in front of Fleet Farm. There's another event that we were doing at Fleet Farm for Salvation Army as well. Of course, we did Movember in the department, 26 members of the department participated in that, raising over $4,000. We also do participate in the Polar Plunge down below there, and at that event, the South Metro event raises $200,000. And then, of course, our partnership with 360's Communities, and you see Senator Cloverter there, who was the guest speaker in 2012 for the Domestic Abuse Awareness Lunch, which is really one of the premier events in the metro area and in the state of Minnesota for drawing attention to domestic violence in our communities. A number of the awards and accomplishments that many here in the council are well aware of. Governor Dayton, of course, came in the first council meeting of 2012 and presented the Chief's Award of Merit to Officer Michelle Robertson, Officer Jeff Hanson for their work in rescuing a person from a vehicle crash and working on that, and there was a number of other officers also sitting there that the governor was gracious enough to be part of the presentation ceremony. Officer Andy Hinches, of course, was recognized by Minnesota MAD School Resource Officer of the Year for 2012. Officer Adam Steyer also received an award for Outstanding Service, and was also a DWI All-Star. Detective Dave Watson received a Medal of Commendation. Officer Rick Bustler received an LPD Journal Host Award for his 10 years of service as the LPD Journal Host, show that received certainly regional and even national recognition. And Officer Troy Hokinson and Detective Brad Paulson are there at a BCA Management Course graduation, and they went through a series of courses, over 80 hours at the BCA, and they're there with our Director of State Minnesota, State of Minnesota Director of Public Safety, Mona Domon, and the Superintendent of the BCA Wade Setter. And of course, we couldn't do what we could do without our volunteers. Our reserves, it's our reserve unit, who donate almost 2,000 or 4,000 hours a year. Our chaplain, Mark Bellows, who donates his time as a chaplain, and giving chaplaincy services to both the department and members of our community. And Officer Heidi Crane, the captain on the reserve, was the LPD Reserve of the Year for 2012 as well. And like I said, we could not achieve our mission without their assistance through the year. And our citizens, Greg Bowle, Bowle from Country View Mobile Home Community, and Kathleen Chugel from the Dot Court Apartments, working with our CRT officers in reducing crime in their neighborhoods. And our CRT officers have taken the high-crime areas in our city, and the areas of high calls, and work with the residents, work with property managers at these locations, and reduce the number of calls, which has been part of the reason why we have been able to reduce the Part 1 and Part 2 crimes in our community, is working together with the community in these areas, and this has been very effective. And of course, Leah McSkell up in the left-hand corner, got the Chief's Award of Merit for her lifesaving actions in the young boy who drowned and almost drowned in the community pool. And finally, celebrating Police Week. Of course, every May 15th, we do have Police Week, and we have, we open up our, have an open house at LPD. You can see our Dakota County Sheriff's partners brought over their fan boat, which the sheriff is extremely proud of, and the State Patrol brought their helicopter down. And when I talked to the pilot from the helicopter, I said, well, what is your patrol area? Because he was actually from Bemidji that he flew down, and he said, the state of Minnesota. So I said, oh, okay. And then, of course, the line was there as well, and you can see right down below, Sarah Brockman is a community service officer, before she was promoted to patrol officer there with some other prospective LPD officer candidates was part of the day. And we also will be having a open house this May 18th, Saturday, May 18th of this year, for all of our residents, and we will have equipment displays, and we'll try and get the State Patrol helicopter again as well, from 9 to 1, celebrate Police Week. And that concludes my report, and I'd just like to thank the council and the mayor for your support of the Lakeville Police Department, and on behalf of all the men and women of the Lakeville Police Department. Thank you very much.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 8, Conditional Use Permit for Mom Brands. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is Community and Economic Development Director Dave Olson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Pauline's done a nice job of giving the history of Mom Brands' continued expansion since they've relocated their initial technical center to Lakeville, so I won't reiterate that, I'll just hit some of the highlights from the planning perspective, and I appreciate again, Mr. Moore, you've given me, I haven't written a conditional use permit in a while, a report in a while, but Daryl had enough confidence in me to let me give it another try, so I appreciate that opportunity. And the, as Pauline indicated, the conditional use permit is to basically combine parcels and then develop these two lots that were previously on two parcels as one. And we'll get into the site plan, hopefully you've had a chance to review those in your packet over the weekend, but what they are now referring to is East and West Building, the former Hearth and Home Building, being the West Building, and now the recently acquired former New Morning Building, being the East Building. And hopefully everyone's familiar with this area, this is part of the Fairfield Business Campus that was originally developed by the city in the early 1990s. We're on second-generation businesses in both of these buildings, and not too long ago, we had image strand in here, and they've recently completed an expansion, they're actually right across the street, also a second-generation business in the Business Park, and it's been an enjoyable opportunity for me to work on both of these projects. This is how the property lines sit today, and the one thing that coincided with shortly after the purchase of the original, which the property line for Hearth and Home originally was the property line for Hearth and Home originally went straight north like the, along this alignment. And shortly after they acquired the, enclosed on the former Hearth and Home Building in 2009, New Morning was still owners of their property at that time and made available. And Mom Brands, Multi Mill at that time, acquired four and a half acres of vacant undeveloped land. And basically, it was to facilitate not only future parking, but the possibility of a future building in this area, too. And as you know, we went through a process of modification of the conservation easement that existed out in that area to facilitate that. And that was reviewed by, both by the Planning Commission and City Council. Since that time, obviously, the rest of the New Morning, former New Morning property became available. And in late 2012, Mom Brands was able to acquire that building. And so what we'd like, what they're proposing to do now, and Pauline was correct, there is a renovation taking place right now of this building and utilizing some of the same techniques that they did in the original Hearth and Home Building whereby precast concrete is inserted inside the building to take warehouse and manufacturing space that has 28, 25 foot clear into basically two-story office space. So they were able to do that on the West Building, and they're doing the same thing right now on this building. And it's a major, in excess of $4 million renovation of this building that's currently taking place. And along with the interior renovation, there'll be some work done on the exterior. And they did a nice job on the Hearth and Home Building and punching, there wasn't a need for very many windows when it was manufacturing and warehouse, but now it's being converted to office space. Obviously, there's a desire to bring more natural light in. And so this is an example of where additional windows, and they've figured out how to modify these precast concrete buildings in such a way that converts and changes their usage. And the other thing that will happen to this building is that it will have a new stucco finish applied to it as well, in addition to the new windows that will make it look compatible and similar to the Hearth and Home Building in terms of color anyway. And this is what the plan is, why we're here tonight before the council. The parking lots and the, where the existing property line exists today goes right through the middle of some of these new parking lots that are being proposed. And as Pauline indicated, there's a desire to create a green space so that it provides convenient and safe pedestrian access between the two buildings for Mom Brands. And as a result, what makes sense to, as we did a couple of years ago when they attached the four and a half acres to this parcel, now they're basically going to require, or request that this, these two parcels and this whole 22-acre, almost 22-acre land area be combined into one parcel. And the ordinance provides for multiple buildings. We don't have too many cases where we have a quote-unquote campus of multiple buildings on one parcel, but the ordinance does allow that through the conditional use permit, and that's why we're here today. The one thing that is going to change, and again, right now, there's ability to truck traffic and vehicle traffic through the, what would be the east side of the former, what used to be Hearth and Home. And that truck traffic's now going to be routed around, and there's plenty of existing truck docks on the East Building. And they don't receive a lot of deliveries, but to the extent that they need to, they can still make their way around and get still to the West Building. The other thing that is shown kind of in the gray, blackish areas, additional rain gardens. They were very successful in developing a rain garden out here when the additional parking was done on the initial remodeling. And so I will also give Mom Brands credit. They are, they are good stewards in terms of handling their site in terms of runoff and the area that was graded over here, and there was some stormwater facilities that were constructed over here, is now being in a process of restored to a prairie-type of land cover. And the confident the rain gardens that are being added are going to complement the site as well. Planning Commission held a hearing on this on April 4th and recommended unanimous approval of the conditional use permit. There were no, no one in attendance at the Planning Commission meeting, even though there were a considerable number of notices to the adjoining property owners, both within the Business Park as well as the Residential Subdivision to the north. And no one came to the hearing on the 4th and obviously didn't express any statements or concerns. So the action before council tonight is to approve a conditional use permit, to approve the multiple buildings on a single parcel. And included in that is the adoption of the findings of fact as presented in the packets. And included in your packets were the minutes of the April 4th meeting, as well as the actual CUP document and findings of fact. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Item number 8 was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Well, those were the highlighted items presented to the council at their April 15th, 2013 meeting. If you have any questions or comments regarding these agenda items, please feel free to call City Hall. The number is 952-985-4400. Thanks for watching this edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up. The Lakeville Rotary presents the 11th Annual Taste of Lakeville at the Lakeville Area Arts Center on Thursday, May 16th, from 5 to 9 p.m. Enjoy food samples from area restaurants and wine and beer tasting galore, plus live entertainment and silent auctions. Tickets are $30 in advance or $40 at the door. Proceeds benefit local scholarships and community projects. Check out event details at tasteflakeville.org.